Regular meeting of the Page County Board of Supervisors to order this time. And I noticed that all members are here. And we're going to begin with a moment of silence. And then lead us into the pledge.
Yeah. Moment of silence, please.
Amen.
Ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Okay, we're going to adopt the agenda this time. Any additions or?
Mr. Chairman, have a motion.
Are we going to discuss anything about the requests from the towns that were supposed to cover the money? We didn't address any of that tonight.
About the towns request anybody?
Yeah, I got a call today from the town manager wanting to know how we stack up with, you know, what they requesting.
But it was on the list, but we could probably just the whole business add it. The whole business just.
Well, that's what I want to say.
I mean, it was on the list last meeting. We went over it.
Yeah, we did. We went over the whole list.
Yeah, there was certainly this approach. I don't have any more on that.
Do you have a copy of it for use tonight or not?
No, I didn't know if you were going to want to talk about it.
I think it's a debate now then.
I think I can send it to all of you.
Yeah, I just want, all I want to find out is, is what they've asked for and what they will be doing.
And I think what they asked for, what they got, according to.
Yeah, it's based on the population. So they, they, it is set. And they were notified. So at any time they'd send either, I have a certain form that came from our auditors that they have to certify that it was spent in those guidelines before they get reimbursed.
And receipts and all that.
Yes.
And I think all that's cool. I just want to know when that's, those steps will happen, when it will be dispersed.
It already happened.
Okay. So they should have.
It's on a roll in, yes.
Well, if they spend the money on an X, they provide the receipt in that form, they get money back for the next.
Well, I was, I was, based on what Avon East was intending to do, they actually hadn't received anything yet.
And they actually been on top of it.
That's okay.
They've actually did a good job of it.
They've done a great job of it. And I think they've only got about $50,000 left to spend. And we have reimbursed them for every request.
Maybe just send Jeff a copy.
Just a shout out to you guys. They're on top of it and sure away.
Yeah. So I'm not sure.
There's nothing missing there.
I just want to make sure I'm on my.
Yeah, it did fall.
Jeff has on the warrant, please.
If they haven't received it.
You know, I don't know what's ongoing. That was my question.
Yeah, if they haven't received it, that's really concerning to me.
Well, it could be that check.
Over a week.
It could be that check.
They would have had to go.
They might have had the check. But they not, they didn't, well, they said it didn't go in.
Yeah.
We can follow up with that offline.
I'll have her to, I'll have her to check that.
Yeah, I just talked to her today and she didn't mention it. We had a discussion of second name.
I talked to her about 5:15.
Oh, okay.
All right, we have a motion to adopt the agenda.
That's presented.
The second one, Mr. Vaughn. Are there any changes or any other suggestions from anybody? Discussion. Hearing none.
Dr. Phoenix.
Yes.
Mr. Guzzi.
Yes.
Mr. Lauterbach.
Yes.
Mr. Strube.
Yes.
Mr. Foltz.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Okay, we go directly to public comments on agenda items. It's three minutes and it's agenda items only.
We have seven speakers. Clyde Humphrey.
And Regina, would you just, or Nina, whoever is more comfortable, just, just for the, just say it's time to work time. At three minutes.
And I'm assuming that the solar ordinance does come under the category of an agenda item. You may recall that two years ago, there was a lot of concern among our citizens about proposed solar farms. Allegations faced partly in fact and partly in myth were rampant in social media and in letters to the editor of our local newspaper. As a service to the county, a Page County Public Forum held a forum to discuss utility scale solar facilities in Page County, fears and facts. On October 30 of 2018, about 100 citizens participated. We summarized all of their questions and our panel's responses in a memorandum to the Board of Supervisors dated November 5, 2018. Many of the issues expressed by citizens are adequately addressed in the currently proposed ordinance on solar facilities. It is a good ordinance. But, but concern about chemical contamination is not addressed. Citizens were alarmed about panels containing toxic chemicals such as cadmium telluride, copper, indium gallium selenium celenide, and cadmium sulfide being discarded in our landfills and contaminating our groundwater. Industry studies have indicated that cadmium telluride panels are environmentally safe. But studies have also shown that if these panels were to be crushed into small pieces, placed in a landfill, and exposed to acid rain, there would be significant leaching of cadmium into the environment. Lead solder also contains cadmium. Therefore, the following should be added to the ordinance. Mono-crystal and silicon solar panels are authorized for all solar facilities. Use of other types of panels require preapproval by the zoning administrator.
Time.
This time.
Okay, and damaged panels, panels that have reached the end of their useful life.
Mr. Humphrey.
Shall be recycled. Thank you.
Yes, sir. And we have your letter here with the, with the, all the details. Thank you very much.
Kathy Gregg.
I signed up for the latter period comment, for open comments.
Yes, you did. He was on that one, he's on this one as well. Ken Jamelody.
Hey there, y'all shouldn't remember me. If you've noticed, I stopped wearing my no-solar-in-Page-County hat because I am a believer in this ordinance. I think through the expensive and laborious process, the planning commission and the Berkeley Group and the citizens have come up with a very strong ordinance to protect Page County. But I do think we ought to add in those two points Clyde, Clyde mentioned tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
Charles Newton.
I want to comment on two items on your agenda. One is your changes to the planning commission membership and the other is the solar ordinance. And I want to just say out in public that most of the problems that you folks had with the planning commission were later found out by a Freedom of Information Act request to be the result of collaboration between the landowner's attorney and the chairman of the planning commission, the vice chair, and a third member. Three members of the planning commission were coordinating with the landowner's attorney and with Urban Grid to remove protections that the Berkeley Group had submitted in their ordinance. So the first, you lost the first eight months of the year to those machinations by those three to remove the protections that you asked the Berkeley Group to provide for you. In the last couple of months, after those folks were exposed and they realized that people knew about their collaboration, they kind of sat on the sidelines. And as a result, I think you have now, what the Berkeley Group will present that the planning commission worked on really put back most of the protections that we wanted for Page County. So those are the two items I wanted to say is that you've got a good ordinance, relatively good. Yes, there's other things you might do to protect the county. But part of the problem is that the planning commissioners released all the new ones you've appointed in the last year, but one. Only one of the new planning commissioners has taken a citizen planning class. So you could very easily say that all of commissioners need to take that during the first year, say, of their term on the planning commission. And that combined with possibly making sure that we don't have the shenanigans that I described by those other three would probably make you have a much better planning commission.
Thank you, Ms. Newton.
Rod Graves.
Good evening. I had something longer planned. I just want to say in brief that I definitely support the planning commission's efforts. I do recognize a lot of what was just said, but still think that a very solid and comprehensive solar ordinance was adopted and recommended to you all. I think it's somewhat of a compromise. That's what makes our country great in many ways. The planning commission wants in gear with the Berkeley Group. I think Spencer spent our county's money wisely. I think that this place that we call home in Page County, we see that, you know, agriculture and tourism are working. I've been spending 30 years of my life doing that, played a whole lifetime involved with that, giving my thoughts to that group and to you all through over two years of dialogue. It's been a long road. But I think that, I think it's incumbent upon you all to look at what we've given to this body here behind me and with what the county has spent on this to adopt this plan. It does have some, some things like Mr. Humphrey mentioned and others have some finer points to it. It could be done as the time goes on, but I think a very comprehensive and worthy of this county plan as we move forward. I would like to say, don't pick it apart. It was come this far. And it's, it's, like I say, a work of compromise and one that has, has grown of dialogue on both sides of the aisle. And my opinion of it, very, very dangerous. In my lifetime, I don't think we've ever had a more dangerous situation with zoning and planning for, you know, things that are new, like solar energy, to address our county. And I think they, they did a good job. Hope you vote for it.
Thanks. Thank you, Mr. Graves.
Beth Snatter.
I've also been coming to all the planning commission meetings. And thank Charlie for pointing out some of the shenanigans we witnessed and were disheartened. But the last couple of months, things have seemed to come together. And I also support the efforts made to put some protections in for the county. Berkeley Group did a good job giving us, giving the planning commission a basis for protections. And it was alarming when they were stripped out. And we're, we're glad they were put back in. The one thing I'd like to point out is that you should readjust those fees because by reducing the fees down to almost nothing, what the county made, got like, what, $1,800 for those last two permits and spent $100,000 or more, $100,000 in legal fees going over and over and over and over in it. So that would be one thing I would like to see put back. Thank you.
Isabel Graves.
I'm going to go first.
Thank you all very, very much. We go to action matters, budget changes. Ms. Bulwer.
We have three items on here for consideration. The first is a $54,791 CARES money for the registrar's office that was used to pay for the required this year early voting registration office and equipment for that and to pay for the staff, used to staff that. And I will say, that gets busier by day, the closer it gets to election time, the more people that we see coming through here. We have one in here for the Page County Public Schools. If you recall, they sold that house that was off in the field next to, not, not the one.
Yeah.
The one that sits next to Page, or Royal Elementary. And they would like, they never requested that the funds be appropriated. So they're requesting appropriation of those funds in the amount of $63,363. And then the third item is the Page County Sheriff's Office has asset, federal asset forfeiture money with a balance of $60,836 that they would request to be appropriated. And it has to, it can only be used for certain things regarding law enforcement. So the amount of appropriation request is $178,990. But this is all, I would consider a pass-through fund. There's no local match.
Could they use that for the vehicle they requested, I guess?
They could use it to purchase a vehicle. I think what their plan is right now is to use it for all of the, I cannot believe how expensive it is to outfit all of the equipment on the police vehicles because we got an invoice today and it was almost $10,000 for two.
I mean, they have them on order, so it's probably, I think they'll hold it out. They have them on order.
Does that include ten wins?
I don't think that that is part of it. It is very specific as far as police supplies. They could purchase a vehicle and outfit the vehicles.
Mr. Chairman, I have a motion. I would like to thank each county board of supervisors approved the appropriations requested in the funds of $178,990 as outlined above as pass-through money.
You have a motion by Mr. Guzzi. Second. Second by Mr. Strube. Any questions? Comments, concern? What do you have, Maria? This long this been, why is it?
Mr. Guzzi.
Yes.
Mr. Lauterbach.
Yes.
Mr. Strube.
Yes.
Mr. Foltz.
Yeah.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Dr. Phoenix.
Yes. Go to board and commission appointments.
The first appointment for consideration is seen as the airport authority. The term of Keith Stephens has expired. He is eligible for reappointment and would like to serve another term.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Would I make a motion if we reappoint?
A motion by Mr. Vaughn.
He's an asset to that board.
Second. Second by Mr. Lauterbach. Any further comments? I guess we don't have any comments on that.
Mr. Lauterbach.
Yes.
Mr. Strube.
Yes.
Mr. Foltz.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Dr. Phoenix.
Yes.
Mr. Guzzi.
Yes.
Dr. Smith.
Next, we have appointments to the board of equalization. I spoke with the members, all of them, just about all of them that served for one in the last board of equalization. The four that can serve again or willing. That's Nancy Kaiser-Bryant, Julie McCon, Michael Tainer, who wasn't alternate last time, and David Reed. So they are all interested. Received resumes from them.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to recommend the certi court appoint of the above listed to the board of equalization.
We have a motion by Mr. Strube.
Second.
Second by Mr. Vaughn.
Mr. Strube.
Yes.
Mr. Foltz.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Dr. Phoenix.
Yes.
Mr. Guzzi.
Yes.
Mr. Lauterbach.
Yes.
And just to add one of that, you have a complete board unless you want one more appointment or any alternates, so.
I think we leave it open for alternates. And then it's smarter than if you.
I think it would be wise, just in case you have a conflict with the board for these individuals that they can't serve.
Other than that, we have enough to do.
I would rather have there's no group in board.
Let's all ask around for an alternate.
Notation tonight.
Yeah.
Further?
That's it. Four open positions.
Can we go to the consent agenda? Financial reports, accounts payable, approval of minutes, and coyote claims.
Mr. Chairman, have a motion. I move that the Page County Board of Supervisors present agenda as follows. Financial reports for the period of September 1 through the period 2020. Accounts payable, checks payable, checks payable, direct deposits, payable tax-related, electronic funds, transfer totaling $1,2168,198.10 for the month of September 2020. Minutes of the September 1 and the September 15 meetings. And coyote claims totaling $550.
Okay, we have the consent agenda. Mr. Chairman, on the coyote claims, we have that money in the budget or I thought at one point we were over that.
No, it is in there. It restarted at the July 1.
Okay. Is that, how much is in the balance?
We do have, there is what, $450 left after this. And we already have enough coyote claims on Regina's desk for the next time. That's all we have left.
Now, we're allowed to do.
It's a lot of them around.
We're allowed to do 2,000.
Right, but you all.
Only did 1,000.
You did the 1,000.
Did the, did the farmers association or anything?
Not yet, not yet. They did last year. I'm sure that they probably will.
Can you reach out to them? And then in our next meeting, we could address it. Of course, if we can actually do the next 1,000 or if they will.
You can, but there's just a maximum.
No, I know, 2,000. If you would ask, if they would do that and bring it to the next meeting.
All right. Do we have a motion? And a second? Motion by Mr. Lauterbach and second by Mr. Guzzi. Any comments on that? I'll wait.
Mr. Foltz.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Dr. Phoenix.
Yes.
Mr. Guzzi.
Yes.
Mr. Lauterbach.
Yes.
Mr. Strube.
Yes.
Can you go to whole business, the planning commission membership?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. About four months ago, you, the board asked me to take a look at the possibility of reducing the number of planning commissioners from 10 to 5. As you know, now there are two for each district. As I indicated at several board meetings, it is not an easy path to travel because of the overlaying legal issues that I had to deal with. The number one issue is that you cannot terminate an existing member's term of office. It has to have to be able to carry out their full term. So what I've done, after Mr. Vaughn challenged me to have something ready for today, I have a resolution. And what I've done is it's in two parts. It's a resolution and an amendment to the existing code. The resolution portion of it sets up the plan to eliminate positions, not refill positions as they become vacant, and leave one member available to represent each, each district. It'll take four years to get there. The longest-serving member's term of office is miscorrected and that runs till 2024 January. So I, it's, it's by attrition, the way I've set it up. There are no templates to follow on this, so I had to create something from whole cloth. I've got that, that resolution here today. And my recommendation to you is that I hand it out to you today to review yourselves and see whether you see any glitches in it from a practical standpoint. The political standpoint, you'll have to decide yourself. Then I would, I would ask you to put it on the calendar for a public hearing. It's not required by statute, but it is an amendment to the code section. So I think we need to have a public hearing to get all the public comment that may come, you know, come forth because of that. I don't know what's the next date we could have a public hearing.
Well, if they wanted to set it tonight, you can set it November 17.
If you're willing to set it tonight, then the 17th could be. And that will give you all time to review it and, and the public time to see what, what's happening here so that any questions can be answered.
Mr. Chairman, quick question. Mr. Miller, two things. One is you said it, you can't really reduce that board, but does that apply if people, for one thing, if a number does not comply with the attendance requirements, then it can really be reduced more, is that correct?
It's not clear in the code. It says malfeasance and it also says if you miss numbers of meetings. And we don't, I don't know who, who's.
I think since we addressed it, they've all been going to the meetings then. I mean, it's all that.
And the second point of it is if they do not do the requirements necessary for them to perform their duties, so you have to go and take in these tests or take in these classes.
Then I think we'd be malfeasance.
So that's, we have a joint meeting with them prior to, so I'm fine with a public hearing, but would we be prepared to have a joint meeting with them in advance to talk about the training? And if they're not willing or willing to do the training, because that, again, may take care of itself, right? If they refuse to do training, then we need to address that. And two, there are some citizens that have provided quite a bit of emails where they were for you, that they were using outside counsel. And there were some emails, but back and forth, not to the entire planning committee, but only to a subset. And I think we should address that as a board. That's not how we want to do business. And, and so I think a public, a joint meeting or whatever, you could address at least the training part. And we decide on whether or not they want to address anything else. But you have people that refusing to do training in a position that I've been told needs updated training. We've only had one person do that.
Correct.
So I think we need to call that out first and foremost. If we have a meeting and five of those individuals say they will not go be trained, I am not going to, that falls under the, this.
But I think you should remove them from that.
So then we can put the plan together.
Or they can resign.
So I don't think we should have this meeting until we have that conversation.
That's fine. I mean, whatever.
Can you do it jointly?
You already have a joint meeting scheduled for November the 10.
There is something to say for a, for a conversation that is not accusatory. Because these are people who stepped up, at least in, in the beginning, stepped up to do, to do something for the good of the county. And if there are some things that have fallen apart along the way, along the way, then we need to talk about it first. And I think we're, it sounds as though we're operating from, from a, from a point of alarm.
Maybe we ought to ask.
Let me finish. Let me finish. We're in a regular meeting. And I, and I think that to, to, to not have discussed it in a, in a straight-up board-to-board way, first of all, and we just haven't done everything that we need to do first. And I appreciate very much that we have an idea about, about how we could go forward, but I think we need to know that everybody needs to be on the same page. It's not just us that have, that we've come up with some plan because there's something that we feel is, is missing. It's got a bad taste to it.
So you agreed we should meet with them on the 10th and talk to them. So take my recommendation, let's do that. And if we need to have a public hearing, we'll have it.
No, we're not.
Time is not an essence on this subject, so.
Right. Let's do the joint meeting if we have plans.
Do it wisely. I would say, why don't we, why don't we task our boss here to talk to Tracy about it?
Well, that's what I'm saying. We already have a joint meeting scheduled for November 10.
Yeah.
So you could add this on that agenda. And if you do, I just need to know if you want to have that public hearing.
Well, I think we could hold off on that public hearing and schedule it after that meeting.
I wouldn't set a public.
No, we don't need to.
I think the first thing to do is get off everything, transferring on the table.
And we might have a plan laid out from there, right? So why would we have to have a public hearing?
It might self.
It might self-take.
All right. I like, hey, go ahead.
On their training, do they have to go someplace to do that? Or is it on the internet or?
It has been in Harrisburg. And then, I mean, it's been as far as Richmond. And this past year, it was in Harrisburg. And I think it's multiple days.
Okay. Where'd you take yours?
If I may address that, when I took mine in February, it was a week before the lockdown. So it was in Harrisburg and it was completed online. And I believe the rest will be completed online.
It probably will be now, but in the past, it was, you could attend.
And there's a lot of work that needs to be done privately between the two sessions.
And in addition to that, I think there has to be, we have to be sure that everyone on our commissions, on our committees are aware of what's required of them for that. I happen to have been, very, very bad timing on myself to be standing near a conversation, a phone conversation about some of the basic, basic requirements having to do with, with proper behavior, signing off on conflict of interest, for example. These are, these are state requirements. And I'm listening to this conversation where somebody is saying, is that correct?
Yes, and they get the short form.
Yeah, and the short form. But if somebody refuses to do that, they don't feel like they want to do it.
It's a requirement.
Then, then we fight ahead. There should be some expectations, so.
I think, I think the positive thing about it in the training, the Berkeley Groups, what's your head, the person in charge of the Berkeley Group, helped, helped prepare the training, right? your head, the person in charge of the Berkeley group, helped prepare the training, right? So we hired the company that lays out how they do the job and how they do the procedures. I think that reflects on our trust in the Berkeley group, that that's a good thing, that we need people to do that. So that's just a little bit about it. I think we'll accomplish a lot in that joint meeting. I think that's the right way to go.
Anything else? I have one more thing. If anybody's studied the comprehensive plan, the volume one vision, which I've gone all the way through, is remarkable. And of course, it's also partly from prior work that's been done, but it's a lot of work, and it's a great job. And so, and likewise, the volume two, that I wanted to glance through.
Liz Lewis was the one that was facilitating that.
Yeah. Very, very good. I think we're moving forward in a proper way here. Anything else on that?
Nope.
Okay. We go to new business, review proposed solar regulations, Rebecca Cobb?
Good evening. Good to be in front of you again. I was here recently when we kicked off the Berkeley group working with you all to redo your zoning ordinance, so good to be back with you. I've been with the planning commission several times now, and tonight, I would like to talk to you about the utility scale solar that we've been working on. Go ahead, Ms.... And so what I'd like to do, you know, some of you may be very aware and tired of hearing some of this, and some of this may be somewhat new, so I kind of wanted to just cover everything for everyone just one time. So tonight, I would like to walk a little bit through about, you know, why is solar even here, how much could be coming, what are some impacts and things that we need to consider, and then drill down a little bit and look at the Page County proposed article. Next slide. So why are we having this solar boom and having all of this interest in solar? And that goes back to the realization of climate change and environmental concerns. And so from that, that has spurred hundreds of companies to commit to go 100% renewable. Also, solar has been decreasing in cost. And close to home in Virginia, there's an executive order signed September 2019 requiring a plan of action to produce 30% of Virginia's electricity from renewable sources by 2030, and then 100% carbon-free by 2050, as well as the 2020 Clean Energy Act requires Dominion to be carbon-free by 2045, and Appalachian Power carbon-free by 2050. So the two sort of biggest power industries are being required to do this. So they're going to be coming forward to everyone in Virginia seeking to meet their goals. Next slide. So clean energy demand in Virginia, right now, you can see there's about 470 megawatts in 2020 that's up from 17 in 2014, and that's just going to continue to increase as you see those onshore targets and storage targets are quite a bit more than the 470 megawatts. So that's why we're going to be seeing more requests for this. Next slide. So while we're getting these requests, what should we be considering? What are some impacts? So first of all, I would say change in land use. So these facilities typically go on farmland and typically are there for approximately 40 years. So that means that property is no longer used for farmland or forestry or whatever is there for that time span. So also, impacts would be visual impacts, environmental impacts. These sites usually have a tremendous amount of grading or land disturbance that occurs, as well as there's fencing along a large portion of acreage usually. And so that's going to also change your animals and how they migrate and move. Decommissioning is another important topic to consider, so these sites do have an end life and would need to be decommissioned. And so with that, there are, and rightfully so, concerns with, you know, is that going to be done properly, and who has the burden of making sure that that happens? Economic impacts, this is good news here, starting to change a little bit. Previously, there were a lot of tax credits for the applicants, and so the localities really didn't see a lot of economic gain from these. Certainly, there's, you know, some employment during construction and decommissioning, but during the active site, there's not very much of that, usually one or two employees, and sometimes they just rotate sites. So, but now, as of July this year, there are some new legislation that is giving the counties and other localities a little bit more to work with in terms of economic impacts. And of course, size is going to affect all of these impacts. So the greater the size of the facility, the greater concerns one might have with visibility and the environment and decommissioning the site. So those are all things to consider, as well as then also looking at location in your community. So a lot of these you don't want in your growth areas. The interesting thing is, there are a few localities, I will say, that actually do, they're trying to, you know, hold back a little bit of growth. And so in those localities, sure, they say, yeah, we want to reserve this space, you know, to be open in later years. So sure, we'll invite those into these growth areas. But a community like yourself, you probably don't want these coming into your growth areas. You want those to be residential, your commercial properties are important to you. Also, the planning commission considered the importance of your prime farmland, as well as ecological-sensitive sites, historic sites, and then also trying to be good neighbors, thinking about when you're adjacent to your residences or businesses. One flip to this is that it is good to have these near transmission lines. So if they are located near transmission lines, you know, that reduces the impact of requiring additional lines be put in to service these. So those are just some of the location considerations. And so are we ready for solar facilities? And I would say Page County is almost ready. You're very, very close. It's kind of a three-pronged approach. You want it to be spelled out in your comprehensive plan. You want your zoning ordinance to then back up that comprehensive plan, and then through conditional permits, you want appropriate conditions for the facilities. And so you've updated your comprehensive plan to talk about solar, and we're working right now on the zoning ordinance. The zoning ordinance piece also contains some conditions relative to special use permits, so you're almost there. I would say with adoption of this, you get the check mark for that, and you're ready. So let's just take a look at where you've come so far. So the Page County Comprehensive Plan, you did identify that preserving the environment is a challenge and a need. There's also goals to promote energy, efficient energy and renewable energy. These mostly focus on your small or medium-scale facilities. And so you did also, in the ordinance, identify that larger facilities are important as far as where they locate and those impacts to the community. So that's also identified in your comprehensive plan. And so from that, we have drafted a proposal for an amendment, which would be Article 10 in your zoning ordinance. And this article contains a statement of intent, applicability, zoning districts, small and medium-scale standards, applications and procedures, neighborhood meetings, utility scale standards, decommissioning, coordination with emergency services, general conditions for your SUPs, and then also we propose definitions that would be inserted into Article 2. So just diving in now to look at actually what is proposed in these amendments, your Article 2, your definitions. We have defined the three types of facilities, so your small-scale facility, medium-scale facility, and then your utility-scale facility. We're also providing definitions for other related terms like acreage coverage, and I'll spend a little bit of time going over that a little later in the presentation, as well as definitions for battery storage and decommissioning plan and a few others. I'm just giving some highlights tonight. So then there's a section on zoning districts. The planning commission decided that small-scale facilities would be by right in all districts. These facilities provide electricity to individual structures, so it's mostly used on-site, it's not to connect to the grid. Medium scale, it is in there, proposed that it would be by right in agriculture, commercial, and industrial districts. Again, this is to supplement energy on-site. And then utility-scale facilities would be a special use permit in the A1 district, and these are your big sites that do put electricity on the grid. So then, looking at your small and medium-scale standards, because the comprehensive plan wants to sort of promote this as a good clean energy, we have some standards in for the small and medium scale, but we try to be lenient and not be a burden to landowners who want to do something like this. So the small and medium scale, the setbacks would normally be the zoning district setbacks. However, we do want to be neighborly as well, and so if you are adjacent to a parcel with an existing residence, then you have a greater setback of 50 feet. We've also said that they should not be in front of a primary structure, that ground-mounted panels should not be higher than 15 feet, that the lowest panel height should be a maximum of 10 feet, and that is for erosion concerns, so the higher the panel gets on that bottom grade, the more chance of erosion underneath when that rain hits and pelts off onto the ground. We've also required that all wiring for the facilities would be underground, and any broken or waste miles would be removed within 60 days of taking out of service. So then for the medium scale, because this is a little bit more intensive use, it does have a few extra standards, which says that if it's installed on a roof, they do have to give engineering study to the building official's office, and that when they are next to that existing residence, they do have to do a landscaped buffer of 25 feet. And that they do put up a bond to make sure that removal is done properly and appropriate. Next slide. So the next items we're moving into are about the utility-scale facilities. And so applications and procedures for this, we have listed a nice list here that encompasses what needs to happen in application and being a site plan. Just some highlights are requiring a pre-application meeting. This is really important. We found value in this many times in many localities, that when staff is to sit down with the applicant ahead of time and look at the site and find out, you know, what's around the site, it makes for a much better application. Commitment from utility company and with the line capacity it is going to be is also a requirement, as well as aerial imagery showing the proposed location, fenced areas, distance to adjacent properties and dwellings. And again, this is a time when pre-application meeting, staff can point out some other concerns when they're looking at some maps with the applicant. Decommissioning plan and method of providing costs should be included, as well as traffic study and modeling of construction and decommissioning, because traffic is very different during construction, decommissioning versus day-to-day operations of the site. And then also providing impact analysis and statements regarding environment, community, and then visual character of your community. And one thing I'll just point out on this community, the economic, we've also got, the new state codes are referenced here to make sure that the applicant is fully aware, that you are aware, that you do have some good financial incentives regarding this now.
Who's in charge of decommissioning plan?
So the applicant is responsible for providing the decommissioning plan. The county has to accept the plan that is proposed.
County could state bonds or whatever at that point, or...
Yes, you decide, and we would say, you know, Berkeley group, we're planners, we're not attorneys, and so we highly suggest that, you know, your attorney review this section of Article 10, as well as during these applications, really consider, you know, what's being proposed and, you know, what would be acceptable to the county for that.
We have a lot of, we always have a lot of concern about decommissioning, so I do have a question maybe, and I don't want to pause you, but this is great. While we're on decommissioning, if we were to have something about, we don't want it in our landfill?
Yeah.
Right. So that would just, that would be in the decommissioning plan, that would be removed from our county and taken out? I mean, that would be just something part of it that we would add?
Yes.
Would that need to be in the ordinance, or that needs to be in the decommissioning plan? That's my question.
I would say you could put it in both.
Okay.
You know, to be absolutely, you know, safe and certain, and that way, the applicant sees that upfront too and is aware if it's in the actual ordinance.
Then they'll think, oh, in 40 years, I'm just going to take it down the road. No, in 40 years, this is already in place, we don't have it. Okay.
Right.
Okay, I think we need to address that.
And that's something that could be part of the conditions of the special use permit as well.
I would think that that would also have to apply to anyone, even with private, because just because they have it on the roof or in their yard, it's no longer usable, you can't go into our landfill, it's meant to be...
And it says 60 days for the small one, which I understand it might just be in a yard between the chicken. But, I mean, if you're in the middle of the winter and we have snows or we're having a bad winter, we're not only having to get that out of here, but you have to get it taken out of here, so that's where that needs to be addressed.
I'm just talking about the fact that it cannot go in our landfill.
Right, I'm just saying, the ordinance states it has to be out of here for 60 days, so, and it can't be, you know, driven to our landfill.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I think on decommissioning these things, everything is recycled, isn't it?
Right, so these, and we will get into decommissioning in a little bit too. So let me continue, and then we'll circle back to decommissioning a little bit. But yes, and we'll talk about that.
Okay.
So also in the article is a requirement for a neighborhood meeting. Again, this we have found to be very valuable, so that the first time the public is hearing about this isn't when there's a public hearing and they come, you know, not knowing and with, you know, full concerns. So this gives them the opportunity to talk to the applicant, see what the proposal is, ask questions, get information, and then be able to come to the public hearing fully informed, as well as makes the applicant consider what the public is saying and be prepared for that public hearing and maybe, you know, consider, you know, making some adjustments in their application, adjusting setbacks or, you know, whatever is needed. And they have to provide you a summary of the input from that meeting. Then minimum development standards, there are a lot of standards related to location of the site, so acreage coverage is one of those, and we'll talk about it in just a moment. Comprehensive plan is identify service areas, and so we have utilized that language as well to say that it should be outside of service areas, outside of towns, as well as away from subdivisions, transmission lines, we want it close to those, away from federal highways, cultural and historical resources that are, again, identified in the comprehensive plan. There's also locating in relation to steep slopes and avoiding those, as well as avoiding prime farmland. Other standards include minimum setback, landscape buffer, fencing, lighting, the maximum height of structures, site maintenance, and signage. So just take, I'd like to take a moment to look at this acreage coverage term and discuss that and see what this looks like a little bit. So acreage coverage has been defined as the total acres covered by blocks of photovoltaic panels, including spaces between panels, buildings, inverters, substation, battery storage, ancillary equipment, and fencing around these items, but excluding block-like corridors, mandated setbacks, wetlands, and other avoided natural or cultural features on the project site. So the map to your right demonstrates a site that I worked with in another locality. Give me two clicks on the map. Thank you. So you'll see the gold area there, that is one section of panels. Those black lines, that's the panels on the site. The gold outline is the fence. Those two gold boxes are the substation and other equipment that's on that site. So that's encased in and around a fence, and then if you'll hit the next. And so you'll see there are five other areas that are also separated out and covered around by a fence. In between those are blue areas that are wetlands, in some cases, it's just additional setback or just migration of animals and that sort of thing in between and around these yellow fenced areas that I've marked. And then on the outside of that, you see the red line, that's your whole project site. So if we were taking a look at this and we added up all that's included around the yellow, that would be your acreage coverage. And then if you looked at the whole site outlined in red, then that tells you your total site, and then you could figure out what your percentage of coverage is versus the full site. Next slide, please. So looking at what the ordinance says about these limits, the acreage coverage of a utility-scale solar facility shall be a maximum of 200 acres. The layout of equipment improvements and structures, along with the calculated percent of acreage coverage, shall be shown on the approved concept plan and site plan. The percent of acreage coverage for a facility shall not exceed 65%, so meaning a site with 200 acres, that's your maximum, of coverage area must include a minimum of 308 acres of total project area. And then another example, a project that totals 250 acres would be allowed 162.5 acres or less of coverage. No utility-scale solar facility shall be located within two miles of another existing or permitted utility-scale solar facility unless the combined acreage coverage is 200 acres or less. Next slide. So I'm a visual person. I always like looking at pictures and diagrams. It always helps me a little bit more than words do sometimes. Can you give me a second click? It's not showing that one. Okay. Yeah. No, go back one. There. Go back again. Wrong way. Wrong way. Yep. Yes. Yes, okay. So the bluish-purple area shows about 308 acres, and you may recognize this map, I don't know if it's a little too far away, but it's where we are right now. Now, I want to add this caveat, I am not proposing that a solar facility be here, there are none proposed that I'm aware of, but this is just for an example. I usually find, you know, if I'm aware, I was trying to pick an area that I knew you all would be aware of, just to demonstrate and give you some size to think about. So 300 acres is, or 308 acres, excuse me, is that bluish-purple area. And then 200 acres is the area in gold, so about 65% of the site covered in panels. Now keep in mind, you know, the map that we just showed show those broken up, and ideally that's what you would want the site to be. You don't want it to be one big clump of panels and one huge fence, because that does lead to some environmental concerns and, you know, animal movement concerns and that sort of thing. So, you know, imagine, you know, if these gold chunks were broken up and dispersed throughout this site.
We've never addressed that in our ordinances or anything, have we? Breaking up the wildlife or anything like that?
So it does say that, I'm losing the new name, Wildlife Resources, it's Department of Game, used to be Department of Game, but they've just changed their name.
Virginia Game and Animal Precious.
Yeah, but it's, it's now Wildlife Resources or something. And it does say that you will consult with them, and I can say that what they recommend, I think if memory is serving me, is about 40 acres is all should be fenced in one chunk. So, you know, following their recommendations, which is provided in here, you can, you know, decide on that. Next slide, please. And then one more time. And so this is just, you know, to consider a smaller site. Again, the blue-purplely area is 100 acre project site, the gold is 117 acres of panel to equal that 65% coverage. Now, you know, keep in mind, it doesn't have to be 65% coverage. You know, the site, the applicant might come forward with 180 acres, and, you know, for topography reasons, or, you know, wetlands that they have to avoid, or, you know, whatever like that, it might be less than 117 acres of coverage. I'm just showing you the max. And again, preferably these would be dispersed throughout the site.
Ms. Comprey, going to this map, for example, what you're doing here is illustrating the amount of land it would take up, but in reality, there would be setbacks all the way around that property and all, it was not something that would just take up the full amount border to border on that one section, so just as long as people understand that measurement as well.
Yes, yes, thank you for pointing that out, yes. The remainder percentage that's open would have to, yes, go around the border as well. Next slide. Another standard I'd like to take a look at, that a lot of people misunderstand sometimes, is regarding the fencing and the landscaping. And so, you know, these sites, the way that it is drafted here, is so that you do not have to see the site. If someone drives down the road, what they see is trees, if they don't know if that is solar panels behind there, or if that is just more trees, or, you know, some field, or, you know, whatever. So the way the ordinance is written is that there is a setback requirement, within that setback requirement, there is landscaping requirements. That landscaping might be trees that they plant, or it could be trees that they leave while they're doing the site, and so it's natural vegetation that blocks the site. Then interior to that vegetation is your fence, and then interior to the fence is the facility itself.
Did you see the ones we tried, we had tried to put some verbiage in there in the past, about replacing if it's dead or something like that? I mean, if you drive north in Front Row, they've had stuff for five, six years, they still have, don't want trees growing because they die every, you know, when you try to put trees out in the middle, and you're not watering them and everything else, they die every year. So there's no, you could have this without an expectation of them ever growing, if they're just replacing them every spring.
Right. And so there is language in the article regarding maintenance and keeping them alive, making sure you replace dead ones. I would say also, because each site is unique, I would say, you know, think of that when you're doing the conditions for the permits, and, you know, there may be specific types of trees that you request, or, you know, things like that, that you could build into your conditional permit for the site. And so decommissioning, the hot topic everywhere, and rightfully so. What we've said in this ordinance is that end of life, or one year inactive, the site would need to be decommissioned, and that decommissioning means removal of all systems and components, which you'll see from a lot of applicants, is they want to leave things in the ground, take what's above the ground, and walk away. And so what we have said is, is no, you need to return the site to the state that it was prior to the facility being there. We've also got requirements that they have to provide a security, and that the security does not accept salvage value. So getting to your point, when these are taken from these big sites, yes, they're not going to really just go dump them in your landfill, they want the money out of it. If it's a smaller or medium scale, you know, just a homeowner, maybe not. So the reason we say do not accept salvage value, and I want to be very clear, because I can promise you that as soon as I walk away from, you know, this podium, or as soon as you adopt this and the first applicant walks in the door, they're not going to like that, because that makes their security go up. And I would say, make sure you leave it in there for these reasons. And that's because, first of all, salvage value can fluctuate. And so, you know, at one point it may be at this value, and another point, you know, you go, you have to decommission the site, the county has to decommission the site, and that value isn't there, and you don't have that security to cover it. Also, you'll find that because the value is rated so high in the beginning of the projects, there is no security. And so what happens if, you know, the company goes bust, or, you know, who knows? Something happens and it has to be decommissioned at an early stage, when there's, you know, all this salvage value, but the county is going to incur upfront cost, of which you probably haven't budgeted for and expected, you know, to have. So, you know, that's why I really harp on, on this one, to not accept the salvage value.
Ms. Comprey, one thing on that line, you just mentioned that the county would be responsible for that. I think, and the attorney, our attorney can correct me if I'm wrong, but since this is generally leased property from farmers or whoever, they are the ones that are going to ultimately be responsible for covering it, not the county. So I think all, I think it's one thing that's kind of slipping by and people not realizing. If you're leasing a property, if you're, and a client does not follow through on his commitments, you're still on the hook. You cannot escape that because you are the owner.
And a salvage value, you obviously, you have copper, you have aluminum, but they don't want to get that concrete out of the ground and have to bust it up and take it away, because that's not, that's not cheap.
Right.
There's no value in that for them. So I think you're, if you're on the right page, but I think you gotta, you gotta set that. You have, if you had placed a court with, no, the company leasing it have a bond or security, but the landowner has a bond or security then? Because if the company goes bust, the person still owns the land, and the person still needs to remove it, is there, is that, is that something you've seen in the past, or smart?
I have not seen that, or have not been aware of that, if that has, has been the case.
Well, it's too often though, that people expect the county, the county to pick up the difference, and it's not the case in this county.
They're going to be millions.
We're not going to get into that scenario. I mean, I'm not in favor of that at all. I mean, if people want to take on projects, that's one thing. They need to be aware that ultimately they're responsible for the final cleanup.
Yes.
And the other salvage value aspect, how many companies out there now are actually recycling this material?
I...
Whatever out of it. And I don't know of any companies that are currently in existence, they may be, but it'd be nice to know where they are, what the travel time is, what, you know, how you get them there, who does it? I mean, those are components, I mean, it's not something we can think, well, we don't have to worry about until 30 or 40 years down the road. It might be, as you say, somebody that doesn't follow through on their commitment the first three years. So...
But bonds are durable, I mean, that's why you have a bond.
Yeah, but you still got to move them somewhere, so who's going to be responsible for moving them? Where's it going to go? That type of thing.
Yeah, I think you should pull back on the contract. What I'm saying, if you got a bond for X through the company, the company goes bankrupt, you still have the bond, but the bond may never, might not cover the entire amount, and if the entire amount, the landowner needs to be responsible for the...
But if it goes back to the landowner, there is one other option for the landowners to go bankrupt.
Right.
Declare bankrupts.
Yeah.
And I mean, you got some things there that you've got to be very careful of. And I'm more concerned about later on, how we're going to handle this. It sounds all good now, and we're going up like crazy, but what's happening in between? You've got busted panels, you've got, you know, something that comes through a storm or whatever tears them up, where do they go? And I think we need to have all that prepared and be ready to address that. And I don't want to have, you know, viewed as the county is the one that's going to pick it up through town, because I'm not in favor of that at all.
Right, and so that, that security, you're right, it goes, the landowner is ultimately responsible. But with you as a county, if, if the company has disappeared, and you're telling this landowner, you have to remove this, decommission this, you're still going to have costs associated with fighting the landowner. And so that's why the security there is still important, to make sure you have that, and that you're not accepting any salvage value.
And that goes to the other point that was just mentioned, I think it then behooves the landowner to also be bonded, to make sure that they're...
Absolutely. I think what you're saying, it needs some verbiage put in this to cover that, that the, if whoever owns this thing goes belly up, that the landowner is responsible for decommissioning it, and it needs to be verbiaged in this to...
The article does say operator or owner, so the owner is going to be...
But we're not requesting dual bonds, where we could have both of them bonded or separate, because they're two different entities, right?
Right, we're not yet, it's just one, one bond. Because the one bond should cover, if you're not accepting salvage value, you will have enough to do the decommissioning of the project.
You can do one bond, but then who holds the bond if the, as you're saying, the applicant is the one that has the bond taken out to begin with? Are they both on the bond then? So that if that person, the applicant...
That would be like Wells Fargo over...
Goes out or whatever, and they would, the landowner then would take over the bond? Is that how that would happen?
So there are also conditions in here saying that, one, that the value in the bond has to be updated every five years, I believe is what it says. And also if any ownership in any of those things change, that the county is made aware within 30 days, so that you can keep up on those.
Like you said, today they're put in, they're most valuable, 40 years from now, that bond might have to be raised considerably in the last five.
Right, and that's why you want it to continuously be updated.
Is five years pretty standard, or it should be a little shorter?
Five years is pretty standard. Next slide.
The bond is tied to the purpose, it's not done like it's money in a bank account sometimes, the bond is tied to that purpose of decommissioning.
Right.
That's what defines it.
Alan, what would happen to the landowner would probably be, the landowner would probably want to be the beneficiary of that bond also, so that he or she didn't get caught with the cost. So it'd be the way you structure the decommissioning.
You're making a point, you're making a point, and you're making a point, but we have to be careful not to let the landowner structure all the deal and leave us out of it as a county, because...
Because you're going to do it with a special use permit, so you don't have control.
And that special use permit's going to trump that, okay. That's what I'm saying, because if they didn't get good legal advice, or they just got a great contract and signed it, I mean, we, it's not, the special use would trump that.
She's talking about something that's part of the special use permit, but I'm just answering Alan's question about, what about the landowner? Well, the landowner's going to want to be a beneficiary of it, the county's not going to take care of it.
Well, that's what I want to make sure, is that if the client, if an applicant would come in and not fulfill their obligation, and that bond would maybe go with that applicant, that doesn't protect us at all, so we have to make sure it has some protection of it. And just so we do consider that in the future.
So next is a section on conditions, and so these are just some basic conditions that could go in each of your, and we would recommend that they do go with each of your special use permits. And so these aren't all the conditions, because special use permits are unique to the site, and you'll want to tailor those, you know, to each application. But there are some specific things that you want in each one, such as language about third-party inspections, and about EMS and stormwater, and that they have to comply with their site plans and that sort of thing. And then I do want to point out the one too that says you can include conditions that require dedication of real property of substantial value, or substantial cash payments, or, or construction of substantial public improvements, the need for which is not generated solely by the granting of a special use permit, so long as such conditions are reasonably related to the project. And so this again is new language that was adopted in July. And so I think I provided to the county administrator and the zoning administrator all of those legislative changes that occurred, and I believe you all may have gotten it as well, but the group put that together, just a summary of those legislative changes. We have also developed a spreadsheet that helps you calculate, looking at your tax rate and the size of the projects, and to see which opportunity would suit you best for revenue purposes. So if you're, you know, interested in that in the future, we're happy to do that as well. But we wanted to make sure that's in there for you. And then next.
The ordinance, the ordinance is, what's the ordinance? We have public area, the ordinance is adopted, and everything went through, we'd have an ordinance to let people know as they're coming into Page County, what we would expect, right? So we're open for solar, but you need to meet these kind of parameters if you're going to apply. Again, a special use permit though is going to direct them to anything else and above and beyond. So when I'm right, if we say it could be up to 200 acres, if that special use permit came before us, and it was in, right beside, like, or somewhere right beside, you know, the cap, where we felt it was not the best location, can we, we can then massage and change those numbers in that special use permit? What we put in the ordinance, are we held to, or we can change those?
So your special use permit, your conditions, would be things where you can have the applicant create additional buffer setback, you know, specific landscaping, things like that.
Right.
So you can't change, you know, any of the hard numbers that are in the ordinance, but you can, you know, have them offer up greater setbacks or landscapes, and that type of thing.
One thing on that line though, if someone has a piece of property, it's 300 some acres, and they could put 200 acres supposedly on that piece of property, but it has, also would still be restricted, or could be restricted by waterways or whatever, if the waterways are on that property, so there are other setbacks, it could maybe still limit that 200, even if they had 300 some acres to put it on. Is that correct?
Right, right, right. Each side is going to dictate what can be on it, really.
And how much.
Yes.
I just, as one of the members here, I'd like to thank you for your work. I think that and what has been done by the planning commission or members of the public is really, I think, moving, and right now I feel more comfortable with this. But I would like to know a little bit more about, at the tail end, I may not be around to see some of these things go, but I would like to know, you know, how our future citizens are going to deal with, or what might be potential for dealing with the panels when they're no longer usable. And I think it's also something that's good for even our citizens now that have them on their roofs, or in their yard, or whatever, for their own purpose. How are they going to get rid of them without, you know, trying to sneak them around, put them in a gully someplace or something? We want to make sure that they're properly disposed and all that. And, and so it would help if we knew the sources of recycling. This is such a big deal now, there are already companies out there that's already geared up to do this, and it would be nice to know where they are, and how, you know, what they're looking to do. But thank you, man.
Before you get to the, I had two quick questions. One, you spoke, and I agree, and I like it, everything else, the, we're big on our wildlife and everything else, right, obviously? And so where you have broken up fences and all that, looks a lot more eye pleasing, it seems to be better with the environment, the animals and everything else, but it doesn't state any of that in there. We just set that at the special use permit, or that's, the only thing, it's not in there, other than you consult with the Virginia Game and Animal Precious, they may put their two cents in, but you don't have to do that, that's what I'm saying. So would we, anything there would be something, there would be a question for me, if it went to final ordinance, just the recommendation to talk to them versus this is how we'd like them to look, could that be changed or looked at?
So that was something that was in one of the earlier drafts, it did dictate how many kind of migration corridors had to be in there. And so that's something that I could, you know, easily put back in, it was taken out and, you know, requested just to refer to, as Department of Game.
It's more appealing in country and environment than a blob 200 acres fenced off eight foot high, razor wire, right? It is.
Well, if I understand that special use permit process right, you can always add it to it, because...
Yeah, but if it's in there, you don't have to worry about it.
But what you're pointing out is, it's got to be site selective.
Yeah.
I mean, and that's when you address that, when you cross that bridge, you know. Not, not every site's going to have a waterway on.
We have the opportunity to do stuff for our kids and our grandchildren, I don't know who's going to set any seats 10 years from now, 15 years from now, right? So the ordinance is going to be around a lot longer than us. And if we had it in there, you do protect our county. If we think that's the right thing to do for our county.
I think if I read correctly, what was been said earlier though is that they aren't supposed to be like 40 acre tracts.
Supposed, no, it doesn't mandate it in this ordinance though, correct? That was taken out.
Correct, it does not mandate...
It does not mandate it in this ordinance if we have the force.
It gives, it gives an idea.
Well, it could be put back in, it could be put back in. The, the fees that we originally looked at and Mr. ...
I finished, you had listed the fees.
It seems like the fees are really to the small and medium. The fees don't, you know, is that, this ordinance is not spelling out the fees, right? That's a completely separate ordinance and other things. Okay, so we're fine with that. And then the last thing, I've read it, I've reviewed it, you know, thank, you know, two and a half years later, we have something before us. It, it states out the waterways and the, and the wetlands. But the set, you know, it has specific setbacks for the roads and stuff. The waterways and the wetlands, we're not really having setbacks. Is that, was that removed as well, or was that something offered?
That was not part of it. And, and most of the time, wetlands is, you know, DQ guarded, and so they're going to have requirements about staying out of the wetlands.
But we have, we have the Shenandoah River, the Hossville, the Germaine, we have very, you know, Shenandoah River, right? You've heard the song, right? So I'm just saying, there's nothing in there saying a setback. And we do have nice, beautiful, flat farmland running right along the Shenandoah River. So is that something that, that you, you've offered in the past or have something you can recommend in that area for that?
We can, yes, we can put in, you know, setbacks for long waterways.
I only have one vote, but a recommendation to, to others to see would be something I'd like to see. We, we do cherish our Shenandoah River and we don't really have a lot of tourism that we bring for that specific site. So I'd like to see something, what you have to offer up for that.
And, and the question always is, how much of this is by right? And is the person, do you just come in and project and they have the right to do it? Whereas a special use permit allows careful scrutiny for all of those things. All, all of the things that, that probably can't be written into the ordinance.
Yes, yes.
Just want to caution that, that, that the special use permit is a, is a guardian of, of...
But it would be hard on our... If you meet every criteria in that's ordinance though, you're, you're saying, I'm taking this to the next step because you all said, this is what I need to do. So that's, we're putting it out there, we're open for solar once we do an ordinance.
Yes, yes.
Right, so that's where you want to be.
But in, in every apple candidate's going to come in and say, I, I recommend you change this text. I can't meet this text. This is unreasonable.
But if they come in with all of the, all the, all the, everything's dotted and checked and ready to go, they've done what we've asked, then we should. In essence, you don't have much opportunity to do a special use permit. I mean, it's multiple changes, multiple revisions, because you've laid it all out. If somebody were to come in and say, I agree to all those, ready to go, we'll have the back here, backups here on Thursday, then I hesitate not having something in there about the Shenandoah River because we, we've said, this is what you have to meet. Now, I give, a special use permit's where they're going to ask for different things and we're going to have to give or take. But you want to have something in there about stuff like that. Okay, well, that's, that's, I think we're both on the same page there.
Yeah, cool.
All right.
Any other questions?
No, those, those things are, I mean, you've done a lot. Thank you for coming in. That's, we've gotten farther than the last few months with staff and Berkeley Group than we have for how many years? Right.
Yeah, thank you very, very much.
All right, no problem. I would just recommend that you set a public hearing. And I think you heard from the public tonight, the planning commission, many of these folks spoke at that planning commission public hearing, and all are in favor of, of the change, so. Your first opportunity, if you want to set that public hearing, is November the 17th, which would also give you, I'm sorry, which would also give you opportunity to, to have discussion on June, November 4th meeting if you choose.
Can you, there's two or three things that Mr. Lattimer and I said. Can we put those on the fourth meeting just to talk at them about the, about the, the river and the things?
Yes, if you, I mean, would you, would you like to have that public hearing? Go ahead and get everything done and wrapped.
We do, but I think I'd like to, the few things that we've taken out, can we look at in that meeting?
I'd like to have the discussion first before we now set a, a date for the public hearing.
So you want to just have the, the November 4th session?
That or later.
Okay.
Okay, so you don't want to set the public hearing?
Yeah, because we've, we've got right now kind of a whole...
A moratorium.
We have a moratorium on solar right now, so why rush it? Let's get all the data and give us time because, you know, when you have a meeting, then it gives you time to sound that information, think about it, then come back and reevaluate. And I don't think we're, we're not in the old ground here to get this thing done that quick.
I, I agree, and I'd like to see some of the verbiage put in about what we talked about tonight. And then we can have that as...
Are you fine with them bringing that verbiage to us on the 17th then, just to re, re, put it back on the agenda?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, let's do that, and then we'll, we'll hold off on the public hearing.
Yeah, I respect that.
Christmas. Well, I think, I think, I think if you bring it to us the 17th, we're all not going to 100% agree. So it's pretty much a first of the year thing at this point. Okay, I'm fine with that.
2020 then.
2021, we'll get, we'll, all right, perfect. Well, I think we'll, we'll put it on the agenda for the 17th.
Just for discussion.
Discussion, and, and review those, review those additions requested.
Okay, go to the review of the broadband authority then?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Keith had asked me about looking at the broadband structure in, in, in context with your last agreement to try to get service to whole, the county, whole Page County. And he asked me how that would fit into it. I took a look at it, and I'm just...
Well, based on, I told Mr. Vaughn to say, I just want to, I want to finish why. Based on they told Mr. Vaughn, they, their job was completed. They thought their job was completed, so that's the next step, so I was...
Okay.
Okay, be clear, that's why.
That was the, that was the genesis of it.
Okay.
The broadband authority is structured different than the planning commission. So I think what you really need to do there is, before you make any movement, is determine how you're going to, how you're going to manage the, the collection of fees under the utility department. We don't have one, but that concept that we talked about. Because I believe that if you set up that group under the, the county manager, then we need to figure out how to fit the broadband operation in with it. And I'm not sure, I, I know where you want to go with that just yet to, to be able to suggest a, a course of action. I think you need to decide how you're going to run your utility department, and then we'll figure out how to bring it under the umbrella.
And do they have ownership of, do they own either...
They have leased out asset, right?
They have, we, they have the Centerra, not Centerra, the Shind, the Shindale contract.
Right, they have the backbone, but they leased it out to Shindale.
That's right, but that contract's in existence.
Absolutely.
So we just can't move it without making sure that we, we preserve that contract because it's already in place.
Well, and I, I, if they have a five, 10, 15 year contract, I, we're not going to change the contract. I just think based on they've told board members, and many of them's dropped off, and they've also told board members, we're done, we've completed our project, and we as a board, last meeting went a different direction. We're, we're doing it now ourselves.
That's right.
I think we need to make sure that we tie up loose ends and we finish that part of the, and so I, I think you, you researched it. Now I think we need to go ahead and how do we do it? Now, I guess you need to get the staff on setting up the utility, but you follow me? I mean, we're not, the, the Shindale thing is in existence and we're not going to change it. It may better us and help us with some fiber because if they put more strands than they're using, that is good. But they said they've completed their task, right, Jeff?
Yes, of course, I'm concerned this would be phase two of extending what we call the last mile.
Right.
And get into homeowners.
Right.
And, and I, I really think that there's a lot of options out there. You could go with a public to private partnership to set this entity up to collect these utilities and make it a profitable business. Like to the tax pay. And then to cover, cover this service that's out there. I mean, these other folks in business, gentlemen and ladies, you know, it's, it's a profitable entity.
Right.
And it's no reason why it cannot be here. But the goal at stake here is, is putting people on an authority that's going to be shakers and makers and make it happen and get it done.
But the original 2,000 whatever authority is completed. We're, we're phase two, let's go. How do we get them to phase two?
Of course, I'm concerned they ain't in the fourth quarter overtime, and that, they've done what they've done, and let's move on.
Right.
Let's get some fire in there. And we, we, I've spoken to people here that want to make that happen in the county. And I think we need to get their energy and slash their expertise and put it on.
Yeah, and I hesitate having it.
Put it in the hand and make it happen.
And I hesitate having it forever because I don't want to compete, right? You don't want to compete. It's all the same goal, it's for our citizens. Right, so that's, we need to get that done because I don't want to be...
Well, I think procedures legally, you set up the department and how you're going to handle the collection, whether you're going to have a public-private partnership. You pull that in later, because if there's a benefit to it, some way down the road, then you have control of it.
Is, is the broadband authority, it's an authority...
It's an authority throughout the status under the Virginia Code.
Exactly, and so that, that's the, that's the question that I had, is, is how do, how do we fold ourselves into their business?
Well, what I want you to do is figure out where you're going first, and then I'll try to figure out how to get you there legally.
But I think, I mean, I think based on the last meeting, we, we went ahead and, we didn't, we didn't say we're going to talk about spending the money, it's done, so...
Well, I know, but we don't have a structure set.
Well, I know, but, but based on they have 90 days to build out, we have, we have to get on that.
And well, yes, and I talked to them another day, so we have, we're going to set up our kickoff meeting, but they're going to be the day that I get.
Once they do the kickoff meeting, I think you need to get with legal counsel to get that thing rolled in.
We'll get with the before counsel.
Yeah, okay, all right.
And then does, does the broadband authority, if, if, if the county in some way or another becomes the broadband authority, do they have billing rights? I mean, can they, can they, can they bill customers? I mean, that's, that's where it is.
We're going to be, we're going to be, not the broadband authority.
The broadband may not do it, but the county's going to have to do it.
Then you got to designate them a maintenance program.
Yeah.
Service panel. That's all part of the program.
And customer service and complaints.
I just, I just don't want to compete, I just don't want to compete. I don't, I don't want to compete, I don't want to just...
Yes, it is. It's opportunities for improvement.
Actually...
So we have to add on to the back of the building here.
With the revenue, right? I mean, it's supposed to be revenue generating.
But with the public-private partnership approach, the private could be doing that, and we just more or less be doing it.
Exactly.
You just could be the caretaker role.
But I don't want the authority to be the third wheel or competing. You know, I mean, they did what they did, we thank them for that.
I understand exactly, yeah.
You know, it needs to be in place now, but, you know.
Okay, we'll move right along here, we go to open public comments. Do we have any?
Yes. Claude Humphrey.
There's a few little notes that need to be fixed. And one that I would like to mention is that nowhere in the draft ordinance does it really define what it is that the ordinance regulates. It does not define what a solar facility is, which is the subject of the, of the ordinance. And so I have proposed a definition to mean a fixed installed facility that uses photovoltaic materials to generate electricity from sunlight for sale to a utility or power grid or for use onsite or both. They include both off-grid systems and systems connected to a grid. Excluded are hobbies, mobile equipment, science projects, scientific photovoltaic projects that are not connected to a utility or power grid and are not connected to a building. So if, if you've got solar panels on the roof of your electric car, by, by my proposed definition, that's not covered by this ordinance, which I think is what our intent is. So, but I, I think the ordinance should define what it is that we're attempting to regulate. So I think we have a very good ordinance, and with, with a few little fixes, I think it'll be very effective. Thank you.
Kathy Gregg.
I think everything's been said. Thank you.
Chris Anderson.
Good evening. My name's Chris Anderson, citizen of Page County, and also representing the Alliance for the Shenandoah Valley. I support the comments that have been made. It is a good ordinance, it's a sound ordinance. It represents compromise. I agree with Mr. Guzzi's suggestions of the wildlife corridors and setbacks from the river. But all in all, I think it's a fair ordinance. It allows landowners to participate. There's still plenty of places, even with protections, to allow utility scale solar development in the county. So I encourage you all to support it as well.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson.
Beth Snatter.
I agree with them. Thank you for bringing up some good points. I'd like to address, I, I've requested a few times via email that maybe these meetings be posted online. I saw back in August, two of the meetings were posted online. It was very helpful, especially with the limited seating. I would, you know, I for one would like to see that. Even if it's just a recording, it doesn't have to be the, the video. But that would be very helpful and, and go a long way in the transparency of the meetings. And so I'd like to request that once again. Thanks.
Rod Graves.
Excellent job. It's a nice meeting, and I do think the draft ordinance is going in the right directions. I did have a question with the, what Mr. Lattimer brought up. Really great thoughts, Alan. The specifics, you know, devil's in the details of this stuff. And one question I ask is if a landowner sells, and the next landowner, does that pass through the next landowner, which I would assume? And if the next landowner doesn't want to have those in five years, what happens? There's a lot of little, a lot of things that, you know, if you want to buy a piece of land that has solar panels on, you don't want solar panels on, but you want the land, what happens? I mean, is it, does it mandatory you have to stay there? I'm, I'm really, really happy that he brought that up because the specifics are going to determine what we've all been, you know, in this room for, for a long time. The other thing that I think, on Mr. Guzzi's comments, which I think were very good defined as well, specific, not just of the Shindale River, but the Hawksville Creek. I mean, it's basically a river. We have major car systems here that need to be protected, the drinking water, potentially affects drinking water. Blue holes, we have those, we've got lakes, and even wet, wet weather streams that do get big sometimes. So I think all those need to be in account. All those do have an impact in car sthography here in the county. If you have any questions about the car sthography, I can, I can get, I'm ready to help you with that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kent Jamilke.
As far as, I, I agree with everything everybody said. In 125-76 Minimum Development Standards, Section B, Number 9, it states utility scale solar facilities shall not be located within 200 feet of historic and cultural resources as defined and listed in the comp plan. Now, I'm not sure if Hawksville Creek and the river are those historic and cultural resources in the comp plan, but if they're not, they probably ought to be. That would give us a built-in 200-foot setback from any of our cultural resources. Thanks.
Paul Otto.
I just want to support everything that everybody else has said in, in, in support of the draft ordinance. And I also want to encourage you, if you have any, any questions as you work your way through the finer points of the ordinance, if any questions, don't hesitate to call upon the members of the public. They've been a tremendous help throughout this process and have, are a wealth of knowledge unto themselves. So don't hesitate to call on the public, and if you're headed in the right direction as far as the planning commission is concerned. And I'll be glad and I'll be interested to see how that develops. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shaw.
There are other speakers.
May I, board, may I approach again and...
Absolutely.
I didn't print the ordinance with me, so I had to pull it up because I wanted to check a couple of things that we talked about. And I want to make sure I'm clear on what to propose for you all. So, one, you know, speaking to the, the river property and being setback from that, what is written right now says property line would be 150 feet, and I'm assuming your rivers are probably, are probably also a property line. So that would be 150 feet. Are you interested in just the river, or are you also speaking to setbacks on, you know, streams and that type of thing?
So, so we have properties in Page County where the rivers run through...
Well, so we have properties in Page County where rivers run through the middle of properties or not just, and sometimes the property boundary is in the middle of the Shenandoah River, which could be a very wide point too. So there, if you go by property boundaries, it's not necessarily the river bank. It is where the river, the maps are all over the place, high water, low water, so again, it is all over. But what we, what we have in Page County is the Shenandoah River, we have the Hawksville, and then we do have like Jeremy's Runes and Naked Creek and some things that have trout streams that come off the park and Blue Ridge Parkway that are obviously trout and everything else that are very, you know, very beneficial to our county. All those flow through houses and water and everything, and I know there's, there's water everywhere in Page County, but those are the three major, is the Shenandoah River, the Hawksville and a lot of our trout streams coming off the park. And again, I have to take your recommendations on how to address it, but I just want to let you know that boundary is not always at the river, it could be in the river, on the other person's property, you know.
That's what I wanted to ask.
So your recommendations there, I'd love to see what you recommend.
Okay. And also right now, it does say that proposed wildlife corridors shall be shown on the site plans submitted to the county. So there's not a number, there's not a, you know, so many per acreage, it does require that they do show some wildlife corridors.
Was that prohibited from being 200, a big fence around 200 acres square, eight foot tall, razor wire, I mean?
I mean, technically they could do one and have 100 and then 100, you know?
Okay, but it does, it does, it does make it so they can't have a continuous 200 acre fence?
Yes.
Okay. Just if you look at that, how, the PIP treaty showed it looks very modern compared to other people's sites in other states and everything else. If you could look at that, if anybody's put anything more to pen to paper, but that's, that's the road. I think the changes have been beneficial to the wildlife. I'd like to make sure that we're on the cutting edge, not back doing what, you know, North Carolina 10 years ago, but, you know?
Sure.
Okay.
And then is there desire for the small and medium facilities to say that they will not be disposed of, be disposed of in the county landfill? Was that?
Yeah, that should be added.
Okay, I wanted to make sure. All right, thank you, Beth.
Thank you. Take the front row, front row, bring us back, back and back.
Take the front row, bring it back.
All righty. We go to administrators report?
I have a few updates for you this evening. One, I just want to remind you that our next meeting will be on November 4th, which is a Wednesday, November 3rd is election day. We have an update for the agreement with the Stanley Volunteer Rescue Squad. There has been an agreement reached, we don't have a date yet that we are going to begin to outfit and staff that location, but that will be during today. It still will not be at night, right now. Text 911, there should be a public service announcement to go out this week. That will be active, so if any of you in here need to text 911, you can do that.
On the Stanley thing you said, according to the annex, step in the right direction. Can we leave a vehicle overnight though or something, we have to be out of there completely? Is there some kind of?
Well, there will be, they can rent it, yes.
There'll be a vehicle there parked at point 2.
Okay, just giving cover and all that, right? That's, thank you.
The assessment, reassessment, that has been completed, those notices will be going out to property owners probably next week. So those times have been set and property owners will be notified of their new property value, the steps they, if they want, have an issue with it and they want to meet with someone or want somebody to come out and look, there's a form that we have online on our website that you can fill out to request somebody to come out and meet at your property or a meeting to discuss that. So I look for a lot of them also because the values aren't going up. Submitted today the application for the additional broadband, fast track broadband, care spending. There were a few updates to that which were a little bit shocking to me because the deadline for all, for all of the care spending to be spent is December 30th. Well, this has to be spent and up and operational by December 25th. So they gave not much time at all to have any project in place. So what we submitted as a project was a two-piece project. So we submitted for eight of those very large mobile hotspot units that can be deployed throughout the county as long as they're, they're going to pay for them. That, that'll let 15 to 25 users at a time. So if, you know, there's an older person that needs to do a telehealth appointment and they have no service at home, they could just drive to their, the closest ones instead of having to drive 30 minutes into town.
And these can be used anywhere, can?
Anywhere that has a certain speed of cell service. We've already contracted or made an agreement with Sprint that our fee will only be $36 per month unlimited data for that, which is great by Sprint to do that for us. So yes, all that has been set up and these units, we are going to have Valley Automation locally build and complete this, so it will be solar powered and we won't have to plug them in.
But Labor's going to have to address security and where it's located.
Right, and they are going to have cameras, so we'll have some kind of agreement.
Forward on that, how can we communicate that aggressively to the community?
Well, if we get approved, first of all, unless you want, I mean, we can go ahead and purchase them, but I don't know.
They're doing it the right way, we would take an ad out in the paper, we would show stuff on those.
And we'll tell people where they are and ideally, I would love to have people to say, hey, if you want to, you know, church, people have churches to say, hey, if you want to come put it here. Because I also had Valley Automation went and formed networks, I guess, gave us some pinpoint spots that would be great. And Regina and I did a little bit of traveling to see, you know, he told us if our Sprint phone worked and what our, if we had the four bars, then it should work there, so.
I just got some areas in District 5 that people have communicated to me over the last three, five years.
Well, I would love to know where those are.
But I just want to make sure if we use the school or church or stuff like that and we're putting it there, that the school or church understands that they're going to public traffic on, you know, Tuesday night or middle of the night. That's where I think you need to come in, because again, Jeff, I understand that they might want it at the moose, but the moose has to understand at 2:00 in the morning, there might be four cars there. Or if they had their moose meeting, there might be 18 cars there already using the internet, so that's where I think you need to have the legal advice.
And then we'll have cameras on them too, so that if they have some may try to steal or whatever, it's going to be streamed.
If it's at a church, you know, Wednesday night service, there's still going to be cars in the parking lot from, you need to have that ahead of time, that's the only thing. Because we don't have county-owned property that we're going to put them at.
It's some type of, and I'm just going to bring this up while we discuss, some type of tower that's in the process of going up at the well site in Shenandoah. And the only reason why I know that is I followed, followed a track trail that had a huge tower structure on its sections. Because we had to challenge and manipulate going out that secondary road. I don't know what's, I don't know what's, who's doing that, you know.
We permitted all upgrades and stuff, I didn't wait for the last one?
Well, we would have to.
Okay, if you can check that.
Something's going on there, so.
I don't, I don't know what that is, but.
And that's, and that sets, we're, as soon as going, it sets on one of the highest points in the topography of Shenandoah.
Well, that would be great.
So if you come across 602 and look up to the north of the tree site, you know, that's area where I think to put it. You can see the water tower or water tank, that area.
All right, well, we're applying for a.
That might be a good spot to get it out there.
In any areas that are not directly in town, of course, would be the best because most of towns have service. So in addition to that, we, we did this in a two-part application, so we submitted an application for that piece and then a second piece. What came to our attention during all of this with the school and the school's survey where they contacted every single home that there are students and, you know, were asked the question, do you have service? But the question really wasn't asked, can, do you not have service because you can't afford to pay for it or because it's not available where you live? So for the second piece, we applied for the vouchers, which is $10 a month to pay for service for all homes with children that cannot afford the service. So the total combined application was about $480,000. We asked that they approve it either in whole or in part, so it's on a rolling, rolling approval, which is why we needed to really get it in quickly because once the months are gone, they're gone. So I hope maybe we'll hear something next week, we get any of it.
Well, you don't need us, so I know that with, with that being short-studied, if you, if you get it, do you need us to pre-approve it or anything else? Because I think you need to get going on it.
No, because, I mean, that was the application.
You need to get going on it.
That's right, that's right, I already got Patrick kind of waiting. The only other thing I really wanted to, well, one, since it was brought up, our equipment finally came in for the boardroom where we can stream and we'll have the proper sound system and camera system. The issue in the next week is having availability in this room for them to actually come in and put it in because of the election and everything else. The story is pretty booked for the next week and a half. After that, it will be up in, we'll do it all.
Let them do it on second chance.
What was that?
Let them do it on second chance.
Well, election people will be here in the evening too, and meetings during the evening.
There it is.
Because they want to come in every night, I don't know if they might charge us extra, but. I don't know, I think a little.
November 4th, December meeting would be good, so.
Yes, we'll get it as soon as possible. The last thing I wanted to mention, since I have sent you several updates on this, but we continue to have weekly, actually this time, this week, there will be two phone conferences between Valley Health and Anthem. Valley Health and Anthem still have not reached an agreement. If, if that's the case, Valley Health will not take Anthem anymore after the end of December, so effective January 1st, you would have to pay the out-of-network costs. The way that it sounds, they're not going to come to an agreement, I'm hoping that what will happen is what happened with Abus Health a few years ago when, you know, two months into it, they realized, hey, I'm missing a lot of money. Because I, after speaking with our staff, our staff would prefer to stay with Anthem and take their business elsewhere than, you know, with Valley Health. And the other thing we need to remember, which I myself think it would be terrible if we did this. If we were to go ahead and sever our ties with the local choice, which is where we have Anthem to sustain. If we did that, all of our retirees that are on our health plan, that would kick them off and they would not be eligible to come back flying. So I, that is something I just, I am not willing to do to those people.
Got a question now. If, how will this affect our rescue squads and stuff like that? Because we take everybody to LuRide.
Not everybody.
Well, just about.
Would you do Harrisonburg before you do Winchester, is that correct?
It's a little location, but most of the time, yeah.
Would you need to, would you start based on insurance, is Winchester be the first, if, if, major medical, would Winchester be higher on less than in Harrisonburg or does it doesn't change that?
Yeah, nothing to do with insurance, we go to the closest.
You go to the closest, got it, all right. And, and, and our, our staff that's on this, they would still in emergencies, can't get denied service at LuRide, but they certainly would, would pay the out-of-network.
That's right.
I understand that, I just want to make sure that, yeah, so you have a good point, you're still going to get coverage, you're still going to get.
Yeah, where we're going to run into an issue is if somebody has Anthem, we take them to, you know, Winchester or Valley Health. Their insurance company is not going to pay as much as they do on the deal, which is going to fall to the individual to pay. And that may affect that course of non-community.
Well, I think it's a lot of business, hopefully it'll be straightened out a few years.
Was that enough?
Well, first of all, thank everyone for coming tonight. I think we've had a really great discussion, especially on the solar ordinance. The other thing is I've, in regard to early voting, I think it's probably going to be a little bit lighter voting on actually election day because I have noticed a lot of people going in to do that. As a matter of fact, I did it and it's the first time I've done it, very smooth, very easy, my wife is, she's taken a couple of other people. The other thing is in regard to the assessments and all, I don't think it's having much impact on people buying houses because I had a conversation with a realtor last night that there's only 35 properties on the market in the whole county. And so it's interesting too that there are not people that are buying second homes or buying them to live here. So it's people actually from out of town, out of the county, buying homes to live here. And that's, 35 properties on the market is the lowest it's been in a long time. So I think it's promising looking, especially maybe with some of that with our broadband internet services being improved and things, you know, people being able to work from home, we'll see more of that coming. So that's positive, I think, for the record. Thank you.
Thank you all for coming out, pray for our country, it's in the say-so affairs.
Thank you everybody for coming out, and I'd like to specifically thank citizens for getting involved, right? Two and a half years ago, we started this summer thing or whatever, and it's been a mess. But if the citizens wouldn't have got involved, we wouldn't have got to the vote and we wouldn't have got a piece of paper in front of us. So, good or bad, that got done, so thank you for that. And two, you know, the birthday, but she's already left. I think us stating a few meetings ago to get this thing done in stages is certainly helping and benefiting and I don't think we need to deviate from that in any way, shape or form because I think that we have a lot of the stuff on our plate. And two and a half years from now, to hear a huge thing and have a mess again, is not the way we need to handle it. So I'm glad we're doing it the right way and I thank everybody for coming out and I do thank the people that got involved, good or bad. Some of you have been a little loud, a little, you know, but, but it all came together, right? And we worked together, so thank you all for that.
I'm proud of the solar ordinance and information here that we've been able to share in so many further details within that. I think it's a big step forward. Also, I want to make special thanks to the planning commission for the comprehensive plan. It is, it is really quite a, quite a, quite a document, the vision, the first book of vision, it's really quite something. And it all builds upon a history of comprehensive plan, but it's really been, it's really been updated in a great way. Thank you all very much for coming out, see you.
Thank you all for coming out.
I agree with my colleagues and proud to be a part of this board, go Trump.
Any further comments? Thank you for coming.